Good evening and welcome to our third town hall, our second parent town hall. And this one will be a little different than the last one we held for parents in that we have some additional information to share. So this won't be the same presentation that was given in the first community town hall. If you'd like to see that, please feel free to go to our website. We do have the video of the first town hall there for you to see, the presentation and all of the questions that were asked and those answers to those questions. So, good evening and welcome. I'm Cindy McCabe, the superintendent. I'd like to introduce a few elected officials who are here with us this evening. We have Tyra Bataglia, the president of the Board of Education. We've got Steve Whistler, the vice president of the Board of Education, Dr. Pat Dorsey, Board of Education, Dr. Greg Malvoe, Board of Education, Kristin Zimmer, Board of Ed. And we also have our student rep on the Board of Ed, Chloe Kang. Where are you Chloe? There you are. Thank you for being here. And then we have a few commissioners with us this evening. We have the president of the Board of Commissioners, Kenny Kyler. Thank you for being here. We've got Tom Gordon, Commissioner, and also Ed Rothstein. Thank you. So again, I'm just going to summarize what a lot of the other town halls were about already. And that is that we have a budget issue, which is really a two-part issue. So we have our operating budget versus fiscal compliance. And that's really difficult. That's kind of complicated. But the operating budget is the overall budget that's needed just to keep the school system running the way it currently does. And for this budget season, for next school year, our operating budget projected revenues and expenditures did not balance, which always causes a bit of a panic. But we were out of balance by 3.6 million and then an additional 3 million if we wanted to be able to fund the third year of the salary increases for our case and AFSME master agreements. So those would be our secretaries, our instructional assistants, our custodians, positions like that. The Board of Education requested 13 million from the county to eliminate that deficit and to make the overall, and we'll have to make overall reductions if that is not received. So then we have our fiscal compliance budget. The fiscal compliance budget has everything to do with the law blueprint for Maryland's future. That is the budget that has us moving resources around the county so that students who are from poverty, students who where English isn't their first language, or students who are receiving services for disabilities get more funding and more resources funneled to them. And in our case in Carroll County, that funding has to be taken away from other schools, other places, in order to fund what that needs to be, what needs to be given to those schools. So that lift is $44 million. And so our plan that we rolled out showed you, showed you as the community, as well as our staff and our students, what we would have to do in order to get that $44 million to the students who needed it under blueprint. So that's why the Board of Education made a request to the county commissioners for an additional $44 million on top of the 13, because the $44 million would offset this fiscal compliance. In other words, because we had to show that we were spending 44 million more in some schools, instead of having to take that money from other schools, what the Board of Ed was saying is if we got $44 million more from the commissioners, we could just give it to those schools. We wouldn't have to take from one to give to the other. So that's where we were for our operating budget and with blueprint fiscal compliance. And in the next two slides, we're going to go into a little bit more detail on each of those budgets. So for our operating budget, at their March 25 meeting, a majority of the commissioners approved a motion to increase our funding by 5.8 million for FY '26 to a total of 13 million. That's what our board was asking for in the, for our operating budget. So we got a majority of the commissioners to say that they supported that for our operating budget. Now, the commissioners don't make their final decision on budget until the end of May. So right now, we're smiling at the commissioners who are here and saying thank you for saying that out loud on March 25. If this holds, if the 13 million holds for our operating budget from the commissioners, we would be able to fund the third year of the salary increases for our assistants, our secretaries, our clericals, as well as our custodial staff. And we would not need to use fund balance to pay for utility costs. We don't like to do that because if we have an ongoing cost, you don't want to have to pay with that with one-time funds. We also would not have to close outdoor school. I know that was, you know, really important to our community and we heard that from the community loud and clear. We would not need to end one-to-one devices for grades three through five, so our third through fifth graders could keep laptops. And we would not need to reduce the planned bus driver and bus assistant salary from 5% to 3%, which is a good thing. Now, that was all the operating budget and the 13 million from the commissioners for our operating budget. Now we're going to talk about, so I can't thank you enough for those of you who have friends who have written and who are not in the room, please thank them, because our message has gotten through to the legislators in Annapolis, as well as those who are on the Accountability and the Implementation Board, also known as the AIB. So basically, the AIB has already come into an agreement with us to give us extra resources as far as consultants who will come in and look at our data and look at, is there something else that we could do to get into compliance with blueprint? And to make recommendations to maximize our compliance with blueprint. So they have already come to our school system. We are already in a relationship with them. And that's very good that the AIB is providing them, because what's going to happen is they're either going to find ways that we can come into compliance without doing some of the things that we thought we were going to have to do, or they're going to find exactly what we're saying we're going to have to do, and they can take that back to the AIB leadership and let them know. The AIB adopted a fiscal compliance waiver policy on March 20th, and we applied for our waiver on April 1st, so yesterday. We turned in our waiver for blueprint fiscal compliance. So basically, even if we don't receive, for next year, if we don't receive any more funding from the commissioners, if they give us the 13 million and don't touch the 44 that we asked for, it looks like we will be in pretty good shape for next year if our waiver is granted. And that's where we're going to need your help, and we'll give you some information at the end for places you can write and call. So next, so that everybody understands what the waiver is to the AIB, basically, what we're asking for is additional time to achieve fiscal compliance beyond the two years that it's in the state's policy. So next year, the changes, the radical changes that we were going to have to do would get us within 50% fiscal compliance, and then we'd have to be 100% compliant the following year. What we're asking for is a longer period of time to work with their consultants, to work with our own leadership internally, to see if there's anything else that could be done. In that time, we could also see other amendments to blueprint. We don't know what will happen, since we are not the only, we're not the only school system struggling to implement blueprint. So a lot of wheels are in motion right now. There are a lot of conversations going on. So more time can only help us here. So in one year, July 1st, we will make a good faith effort to comply with blueprint by making the changes to the A&amp;S positions in our plan. So the administrative and supervisory positions are what we have to do in order to get the waiver from the AIB for next year. So what we've done is we've said we are going to move forward with, we have some coordinators in the central office, their job will be shifting for blueprint. We have athletic directors who will not be on an administrative schedule anymore, but will be on a teacher's schedule. And we have paused all of the school level changes. So for next year, we would not be taking reading specialists out of schools, we would not be taking math specialists, media specialists, none of those changes would have to occur, which would mean for next year, we're not going to see a whole lot of class size changes. That would be safe too for next year. So while we're working with the AIB consultants next year, we expect them to come back to us in January with a report on what they have found as they've worked with us. And that's really good timing, because the budget cycle for next year starts in February. So we can get their report about how we're doing in January and then make an informed decision about what we need to do in planning for the following school year. A waiver does not mean that we do not have to meet fiscal compliance. It just allows us to phase it in differently or over more time, and it gives Annapolis more time to look at this statewide and make any changes to the law that may need to be made, not only for our sake, but for other school systems' sake. What we really need from you at this point is really to look for folks, as well as yourselves, who can write to the AIB, the Accountability and Implementation Board, and say that you support our waiver. That's all you need to say, is that you support our waiver, you support more time for us to figure out how to make blueprint work for us in Carroll County. Also, you can support the motion approved by the commissioners on March 25 that gave us the nod for 13 million in our operating budget. There will be public comments at their budget hearing on May 6 at the Carroll Arts Center. If you would like to get involved and support us, you can sign up to speak on May 6 at the public hearing for the commissioners' budget. You can speak in support of the commissioners giving us the 13 million for our operating budget. We will have sheets in the back when you leave that gives you the names and email addresses of each of the AIB members, so that you can write to them and, again, support our waiver. Say that you support the Carroll County waiver for more time. The AIB will be voting on our waiver, we anticipate, on April 17. So it is really important that you start, if you want to support this, that you start emailing them now and that they hear from our community from now through April 17. And it will make a world of difference when they hear from you. And then finally, just stay connected to what's going on. Even though this is the last of the town halls, we will be sending out information for parents through School Messenger and then through some other means. So please stay connected to us. Stay connected to your child's school. Your child's school's principal will know what is going on as well. So it's important to stay connected now, over the summer and into next school year, because like I said, we're not going to know anything about the AIB, their final decision about what will happen in years to come until January. So it's just really important that you stay focused and stay with us on that. On April 17, as I said, the AIB should make their decision on our waiver. I will send something out to the community, letting everyone know about whether or not we're receiving that waiver and what our plan will be if we are not going to receive the waiver. So you will hear something by April 17, April 18, in that timeframe. At this time, I would like to ask a couple of people to come up and just say a few words about the process that we've used and what the process has been like. Ms. Bataglia, could you come up first and just say a few words on behalf of the Board of Ed?
Thank you, Dr. McCabe, for this opportunity to speak on behalf of the Board of Education. On behalf of the board, I wanted to thank the superintendent for her efforts, for her efforts with local and state leaders to get to this place of a waiver request. I also want to thank the commissioners for their support of the waiver and their effort to continue to fund us at a level beyond their planned amount. The Carroll delegation also has been important to getting this process in Annapolis to the point, and I want to thank them, most especially Delegate Stanko and Senator Reedy. Our local unions have been supporting this effort and have involved their state leadership in helping to highlight our challenges here locally. Lastly, I want to thank our community members, our parents and our employees. Your messages to state officials have mattered and have been a big part of getting us to this waiver request. You need to continue your involvement. Now that we have submitted our waiver request, we need you to email the AIB members and ask that they support our request. We need the time so that we can work with the AIB consultants to reexamine our plan and look for additional solutions. We need more time to phase in these changes in a way that limits the impact at the classroom level. So again, I want everyone to, who has been involved in this process, you know, just thank you again and encourage you to continue to contact the AIB and support the waiver. Thank you.
And President Bataglia just said something that reminded me of something I hadn't shared with you yet, and that is that the waiver that we sent into the AIB was sent in with letters of support from our county commissioners, all five of them, as well as our delegation, as well as our two certificated unions. So thank you very much. I see Celeste and Nate in the back. Thank you for all of your support on this. I'd also like to give the president of the Board of Commissioners a chance to say a few words before we start Q and A. Mr. Kenny Kyler.
Thank you, and thanks to everybody that Tara thanked. And I want to thank you guys for coming out and the ones that have been to the other town halls. This is an emotional issue, and the more information you know, the better off we all are. Let me do my glasses. I appreciate being able to say a few words on behalf of the commissioners, and I speak for all five. Many people have spent a lot of time and energy working on a path to enable the school system to seek this waiver. Tara Bataglia has thanked them already, and I'd like to add my thanks. It's always a better outcome when people work together to get on the same page, to try and do the best thing. This is a case where that has happened, and hopefully is successful. The school system has a big lift with blueprint, but they have been doing their best for many years. This isn't the first year they've dealt with this. Last year, they were able to get the career ladder in place with the teachers' union, and the commissioners supported the school system with an additional 6 million in funding to make that happen. It's early in the budget's process for the county, but at this stage, a majority of the commissioners have signaled their intent to support the school system next year with an additional 5.8 million in funding above the already planned 7.2 million for a total of 13 million over last year. We hope that kind of continued commitment shows the state officials that while we are calling on them for some relief and help, we remain committed locally to helping ourselves as well. These changes with blueprint spending have been coming, and the superintendent has been forecasting it for years. It's been interesting to see some people appear surprised as the report was released publicly. We need to continue to close those communication gaps. We need to work together locally so that we can continue to work with the state with one common voice. The two boards have tried to maintain honest and open communication, and we will work to do so even more so as we move forward with this. The commissioners all signed a letter of support to the AIB for the school system's waiver. Like Tara, I stress how important it is for all of you now to email the AIB members. Ask them to support the waiver request, and please ask. We're not in a fight with them, we're asking them. And there's information on the back table on who to contact. And again, thank you for allowing me to be a small part of this.
Okay. As I said in the beginning, this was a shorter, a shorter presentation tonight. We have time for some, we're going to take about a half an hour for questions and answers. If you would like to ask a question, just like last time, we would ask that you, when it's your turn at the microphone, that you say your name and what school your children go to. We would also ask that you limit it to one question, so that anybody who here tonight has the ability to ask a question. Yes, I'm so sorry. Before we do the Q and A, even though Senator Reedy and Delegate Stanko couldn't be here this evening because they are actually voting, this is a night for lots of voting going on down in Annapolis, they sent a statement that they wanted you to hear. They said, "We send our thanks to the community members gathered at the superintendent's town hall this evening. Unfortunately, we were in the final stretch of the legislative session with evening voting sessions, and our delegation members could not attend in person. Our process of getting to the AIB waiver, being established and facilitating Carroll's request, has involved so many individuals working together to inform key state legislative leaders and the AIB members and staff of the challenges we face with the Kerwin timeline, otherwise known as blueprint, established by the AIB and the major impact on our schools, given our unique situation in Carroll County. We've been able to cross party lines and are really appreciative of the new partnerships, such as with MSEA, the State Teachers Union, and CCEA, our teachers' union, to move this effort forward and close to the finish line. We're happy to support the superintendent and the Board of Education to help create the conditions where this waiver is possible. It's something that we've been carefully working on since the legislative session began in January. All members of the Carroll delegation have signed a letter to the AIB supporting the school system's waiver request. The scale of the perspective change involved in meeting the blueprint school funding requirements is the kind of thing that can tear a community apart. Instead, largely, our community has come together to understand the challenges and share our concerns and the need for flexibility with state officials. We want to thank all of you who sent emails and messages to legislative leaders and to the AIB members and staff, and even visited lawmakers in Annapolis. Those actions have all mattered tremendously and are a big reason why CCPS has the opportunity to apply for the waiver now. Please do continue, as community members, to email the members of the AIB and ask them to support this new waiver request. Again, we send our regrets that the late session schedule does not allow us to attend tonight, but we and all of our delegation members welcome your comments and thoughts anytime." So with that, we will start with our Q and A. And as I said, please state your name and where your children go to school, and then you can ask your question.
Sure. My name is Sharon Willhide. My two children go to Mechanicsville Elementary in pre-K in grade three. I have two quick questions, if it's okay. I know you said one question. My first question is, at the last town hall, you stated that 375 positions were previously, before this year, previously between '09 and 2019, were eliminated. Why were those positions eliminated, and was it because you didn't have the proper funding to be able to fund those 375 positions?
I'll start my answer, and then I'll turn it over to Mr. O'Neill. But basically, during that time, there was a lot, it was like a perfect storm, but the biggest reason was the decline in state funding, because we had a decline year over year over year in student enrollment. So the biggest factor in why we had to make those cuts was state, our state funding decreased during that time.
Do you want to?
Okay.
Thank you. And then my second question is, in doing all my research, the Business Economic and Community Outreach Network did a research study in 2015 on the economic value of Carroll County Public Schools as a system and its effect and impact on the community. According to that study, there was a 44% return on investment, meaning that every operating dollar that was put into CCPS, the local economy would receive a dollar and 44 cents, so basically a 44% return on investment. Has there been any other research studies done since 2015 to show a different return on investment?
I'm not sure. No. I'm getting a no. There has not been.
Thank you.
Uh huh.
Thank you, Cynthia, for the presentation. I appreciate it. And my first statement is just as a sincere thank you to the commissioners that did vote for their intention to fund the schools. That is a sincere thank you to them, so thank you. I appreciate it. And then my follow-up question isn't necessarily for CCPS, it's actually for the members of the audience. You know, I've been kind of told that I am a loud minority, so I'm actually kind of curious to poll the audience to see who is here in favor of adding additional funding to our school versus who is here as a favor to not add additional funding to our school. So anyone that does not want to fund the school, please make it known by clapping or standing up or something along. Everyone that's in this room here now that wants to properly fund the schools, if you can give us some standing up or some claps. Thank you, audience. I appreciate you coming to stand with us.
Good evening, Dr. McCabe. I'm Cindy Porter. I'm a special education paraprofessional right next door at Robert Mountain Elementary. I'm also the president of CASE, which represents clericals and assistants and paraprofessionals in Carroll County Public Schools. I wanted to say a public thank you to the Board of Education for their request of the commissioners to fund our operational side of the budget, because, as I have said before at other times, education support professionals in our county and across our state were left out of the blueprint. There is only one aspect in the blueprint that applies to people in our job categories, and that's a qualification for pre-K assistance. There was no minimum salary, there's no minimum career ladder, anything of that sort. So I just wanted to say thank you to the Board of Education, and also thank you to the commissioners for your vote of support, because it's important. I found out through this process that a lot of my colleagues don't know what we make as education support professionals in our county. I'm currently in my 26th year as a special education paraprofessional in Carroll County Public Schools, and I have worked to hone my craft and to do whatever I can to help the students I serve and others like me serve. And in my 26th year, having presented professional learning at the local level, and I just returned from presenting for the second year in a row at the national level, I earned less than $39,000 last year. And I'm one of the lucky ones, because I have benefits. I am one of the lucky ones, because I am at the top end of my salary scale. And that figure is after having received the salary increases and step increases for the first two years of our three-year negotiated agreement. I am a single woman, trying a single woman trying to live on that in Carroll County. And at the end of last year, the study came out that the commissioners had brought forth about housing in our county. And it said that in order to afford reasonably a one-bedroom apartment in Carroll County, you needed to earn over $63,000. Obviously, I'm nowhere near that. And as I said before, I'm one of the lucky ones. So going forward, please keep in mind that through this blueprint process and the years that come ahead, the blueprint funding has nothing to do with the educational support professionals, including your maintenance people who take care of your schools, who maintain the bathrooms, who clean up after kids who get sick in the hallways, or your clericals who are greeting all kinds of public members, family members at the door, and dealing with their needs in the offices, and those of us who are in the instructional assistant realm, who are working with some of the neediest students in our county. And that has really changed, especially in the last few years, with the behaviors that have ever increased since the pandemic. So thank you to the Board of Education, and thank you to the county commissioners for your consideration. And please, going forward, keep in mind that there's a lot of people here who are working hard every day and don't make the money that they need to be able to live even reasonably in our county. So thank you very much.
Hey, how's it going? I'm Lehman Tuttle. I'm a parent of two kids at Sandy Mount. Just wanted to start with, thank you so much for all the work that you're doing. It's really means a ton. And thank you to the commissioners, Kyler, Commissioner Kyler, and Commissioner Gordon and Commissioner Rothstein. I really appreciate you stepping up with that extra cash. It's that's going to be a lot of help, and I hope that you can follow through when the actual budget comes around. I actually had two questions. I'm sorry, cheating. One is, the state might not receive $418 million from the federal government coming up soon from COVID funds that we're on the hook for. Will that have an effect on our school system, if any? My second question is something that I'm going to think of while you're saying that, because I wrote it down.
Yes, I'll start answering the first question. So we're actually in good shape with the COVID money. We had one provider who we're still waiting for reimbursements from about about $50,000. But other than that, like, we spent all of our COVID money when we were supposed to spend it. And so we're in good shape.
Okay, that's great to hear. I remember my other one. The consultants that you were talking about, could you tell us a little bit about them? What are their qualifications? Where do they come from? What motives might they have in the consultation process? Thank you so much.
Sure. So the AIB has assigned actually three consultants, a team of three folks, and they come from a company called APA Consulting, which, and I can't remember what APA stands for. I know the first day is Augenblick, and I'm drawing a blank on the full names. This is the consulting firm that the state of Maryland has used over many, many years to look at the state education funding formula. So they're, in essence, the consultants who sort of devise the prior formula and devise the current blueprint formula. And as Dr. McCabe said, the AIB has been generous enough to send them at no cost to us. So they're sort of footing footing that bill for us. So they are, they call them resource allocation specialists or consultants. And so they are the the set of consultants most qualified to look at this formula, look at our expenditures through the formula, and help us determine if if there's some efficiencies we can gain or other ways we can we can code things that would help with this process.
Hi, my name is Julie Walsh. I'm a mother to five children in four different Carroll County Public Schools. We're in Mount Airy. And I am one of the the leaders of a team of leaders of the newly formed Carroll Education Coalition. And I am one of the people who has been going down to Annapolis to meet with legislators and following legislation closely and trying to get a grasp on everything. And I just wanted to issue a series of thank yous. Thank you to all of you, first and foremost, for all of your emails and your calls, because they were heard. I can't tell you the number of offices we went into down there who said, "Carroll County. We're hearing about Carroll County like we never have before." So your voices have been heard, and we are so appreciative of it, and we want you to keep it coming when it comes to the AIB. So first thank you is to you. Secondly, I want to thank the others who have been thanked. Thank you very much to the three commissioners who voted for the additional funding for the school system, Commissioner Rothstein, Kyler, and Gordon. We appreciate it very much. And thank you to all of the commissioners who came tonight. We appreciate you being here. Thank you also to CCPS for their openness and their willingness to answer our questions and for the information they've provided, and to the delegation. So I'm saying all my thank yous. But my question is, could you please talk about this issue in the long term? Because even if Carroll County were to get this waiver, that doesn't mean the situation goes away, am I right?
Correct. So what we're really asking for is, you know, is five years to to look at this problem that we have, that we think we think our specific problem in Carroll County is very different than the other issues that other systems are having because of all of the resources and positions that we had to cut for so many years, that equals about 40 million. Nobody else is in that position. So we hope that through meeting and consulting with APA, that that they will see the position that we're in, and they will make some recommendations for us, for legislators, for the AIB, so that systems that are systems like us who are in this situation, that we we won't have to strip things away from schools like media specialists and reading specialists and math. I think that the goal is to is to have the state see that there are minimum standards that each school should have as far as resources, and that and that we shouldn't take from one school under those minimum standards to have to give to another. Not that the other school doesn't need them. That's not what I'm saying at all. But it shouldn't come at the cost of taking making class sizes 40 students and taking resource supports away from teachers and students. So we want the five years to not only work with the APA consultants to see, okay, is there something we haven't looked at or something that we've overlooked that we could use, but also so that so that they can gain a better idea of where we are and why we're in the position that that we're in. So, you know, as I said, we're going to know something in Jan, we should know something in January about what the AIB consultants think about how how we're planning for blueprint, how we're how we're implementing. And then they're going to make some recommendations for the following school year. But to answer your question, no. What's happening tonight and the information that I'm telling you, while good, it's good news, I'm not saying that we don't have to implement blueprint. We do. We still have to implement it. We just are hoping to be able to work with the state to do it in such a way that we have more time and that we're not stripping too many resources away from our schools in order to do it.
Just as a follow up, so you anticipate needing community engagement going into the future?
Absolutely. This is, yeah, this is not over. Not only do we need community engagement between now and April 17th, when our waiver is being reviewed and considered, but even after that, I will keep you informed. And we most likely are going to need to keep our community engaged in the process. So so I will work hard to get that communication out and to keep everybody informed about what's happening and and what I could really use from the community in order to better the situation.
I just wanted to note that I forgot to thank the Board of Education. And we also very much appreciate the funding requests made by the Board of Education, and we appreciate all of them who are here tonight.
Thank you. Right, other questions?
Hello, my name is Tim Redmond. I'm a parent of two kids at William Winchester Elementary School here in Westminster. I just want to echo the thanks to Dr. McCabe and staff and the Board of Ed and the commissioners for working to working hard to get the waiver, which of course gives us a longer runway to work with. But of course, that also means we need to make a plan to scale the budget to meet that compliance budget, the compliance budget. So I encourage our staff and board to commissioners to coordinate in this regard if they if they're not already, and they might be already doing so. But my real question was, at some of the Board of Education meetings, there was when this the compliance budget plan was presented, I got the understanding of why, you know, if the blueprint requires resources to be shifted, there's staff and staff and because of funding shifts into different schools, why resources would have to go along accordingly. But it seemed like there was also a plan to do like about a one-to-one cut in staff as well to meet compliance. And I guess I sort of lost track of where what is driving that. So kind of would love to have like a layman's explanation of sort of why that's necessary and it's possible.
You're correct. There was two things, sort of. It was it was moving some employees. There's, you know, one, one sort of part of it might be moving a teacher from this school to a different school next year. So still going to be a teacher. If it's a secondary teacher, most likely still going to be teaching the same subject because that's what they're certified in. An elementary teacher, possibly even the same grade level if it worked out that way. So that's part of it. And then I think your question is, why were we talking about reducing positions? And that also was part of it. And that has to do with filling the spending the spending the money, spending the resources in the required blueprint areas. And so those two biggest areas are compensatory ed and ESOL, or multilingual learners, students who's who's for whom English is not their first language. And the reason we believe there would be reductions would be because I might be a certified history teacher, but I'm not a certified ESOL teacher. But we Carroll County Public Schools need more ESOL teachers. And so we would have to reduce some some positions who who don't meet the right qualification in order to hire people who meet the right qualification. So that would be one example of why there might be a reduction. And then a different example could be another part of this. Once you begin shifting that many resources from school A to school B, and then repeat that throughout, that's going to have an impact on course offerings, what courses are available in a school. And if we get to a point where we need to eliminate an area, an instructional area, or many courses in an instructional area, then we wouldn't need the same number of teachers system-wide to still deliver that same instruction. So it's it's both things. You're absolutely right. It's a lot of movement. But then there could also be some eliminations, which would be to free up the money to spend in the, you know, in the correct way according according to what blueprint requires. Did that help?
I guess. Still sort of I wonder like if you're cutting cutting staff from one, like you, like your example, like you're you you cut a history teacher to bring in an ESOL his teacher, that's still same staff, it's just a swap.
It won't be, but it could be close to the same number of positions ultimately, but it wouldn't be the same human beings necessarily. And then that's a whole process unto itself. There's, you know, there's so many things that have to happen beyond behind the scenes to make these things go. A whole lot of work with our colleagues from the unions to work out those kind of procedures for transferring, moving, surplusing teachers from here to there. But in some cases, I think the overall, we call them FTE, or full-time equivalent positions, I think the overall position number would be lower in the future. But it's also fair to say, some of the reductions would be to reduce this person in this job to create this other person in this other job.
Like a swap, in a sense. Yeah, I guess with the longer runway, just the last thing I'll say, just a longer runway, I just encourage, you know, the staff and board to kind of look at ways to maybe retool teachers and things like that to preserve headcount. With this longer runway, we take full advantage and see many ways we can preserve. And maybe that in the future, this compliance budget shrinks from 44 million to some more palatable number. That'd be great.
That is part of our thinking and was part of our thinking. Obviously, if if a person, if a teacher has multiple certifications, you know, in an area, obviously, we would we would utilize them in, you know, in the in the area of need as well. But I understand completely what you're saying. But wanted to know that that's also part of our, that's always been part of our rationale and thinking to be as be as efficient as possible should it need to happen.
Good evening. My name is Willie Taft. I have a son at Winfield Elementary. The consultants that the state has used in the past, I heard something that kind of put me off a little bit. The state has used them in the past, and the state used them to build the Kerwin program. And now the state is giving them to us to make sure that we are abiding by the blueprint. Seems a little bit like a little bit of a conflict of interest and a setup for failure. And I say that respectfully.
I'll say one thing, and then I'll let Mr. O'Neill speak on this question, too. It's a really good question. I think we are, after all of the conversations that we've had with the AIB and with legislators, I don't think any of them ever meant for certain schools to lose this much in order to give the resource to other schools. I think that they thought that we were like most other systems, where we had enough central office staff and enough other FTE positions that we could just reorganize. We could just take the staff we have, and we could reorganize them and give the schools that needed more resources what they needed. I don't think that they, I know that we've seen them express some shock at at our numbers, our data. And so while I I understand your question, and I think it's a good one, I think that I think that by working with us and looking at what we're actually working with, I think they will learn a lot as well as us. Because, like I said in the beginning, I don't think any of them ever thought that putting into practice the formulas that they've given us was going to end up like this for Carroll County Public Schools. I really don't.
I appreciate your question, and I understand where you're coming from. And you had some you had some head nods as you were speaking. I guess I should go back and say a couple of things. They're they're data consultants, financial consultants, and they helped they helped devise the formula. They were part of the process overall, what we call the Kerwin Commission, which was the committee that met, and then that became the blueprint law. They didn't enact the law. The General Assembly of Maryland did. And if you were to read the Kerwin Commission report in the final, what is now the law, the General Assembly didn't act it enact it just the way it was written necessarily either. So they're not on the hook for for creating this. But we don't have concerns working with them. We welcome it. They're working with other school systems. They're the folks who most understand the formula because they were a large part of sort of coming up with it. And, you know, I said this to some folks when they've called in individually or emailed me, if if the APA consultants come here in time and say, hey, what about this idea that we worked with this other county to do? It doesn't look like you've considered that idea, and that saves a teacher from having to be transferred. I'll be happy for Dr. McCabe to let me come to a future town hall and say, I missed something. And I'll be grateful to the APA consultants for coming up with ideas like that. The second thing is, you know, I think they'll validate our data. I'm not, I I'm very comfortable with our data. I think it's clear to us, and I don't think we have anything to be concerned about. And it would be helpful for the state's consultants to to be able to say, yeah, that that is kind of the story in Carroll County, and we're trying to work with them to a more successful outcome. And I think one thing we probably have never said much, but I believe, is that the state has a vested interest in this being successful. They don't want the blueprint to fail, and they don't want the blueprint to blow up a school system in a certain way that that the community has just sort of removed from it. And so I, all of that is why I think we shouldn't be concerned. We're not concerned, and we shouldn't be concerned as a county or a community to work with them. And we actually look forward to working with them. And there could be some good ideas that come out of this that make it a little less of a of a challenge to implement. So we're we're not, we're not worried about a conflict or anything like that. We're happy to have them here.
Thank you, sir. Additionally, data-driven technology, the more we go down that path, I think the further removed we are from the human aspect of this. And the young lady, I'm sorry, ma'am, I can't remember where you are. Yes, who talked about living on a Who talked about living on a low wage and doing a hero's work. My concern is this, my son didn't test off the charts, but he also didn't test in an area where he needs resources. I work in law enforcement. My wife works in higher education. And we both have expressed concern that this is going to create a cataclysmic effect whereby the kids who hang in the balance, like my son, are going to fall to the bottom. And now you're in a situation where Carroll County was punished for being in good standing and having resources redistributed to now you have a group of kids, two years, three years, five years from now, that slipped to that bottom quarter and need those resources. And now the Blueprint is, has created a problem that if you ask me, it knew it was going to create, whereby it was going to need more monies and where are you going to get those monies from? So I'm sorry, I don't mean to sound like the sky is falling, but I, that, that is my valid concern, you know? And I'm going to finish off with a little statement, if you will, sir. My commute to work was minutes. My wife was in a position where, where we used to live, she could walk to work if she really wanted to. Our son was in private school. That cost money that we didn't have, which meant that I had to spend more time away from the home because we did not trust the public school system where we came from. So that impacted my relationship with my wife and my son, just to provide our kid with a somewhat decent education. We both sacrificed, we, we came up here to an open house and my wife and son fell in love with the house we looked at. We had eight open houses scheduled in one weekend and she fell in love with the first house. We made a sizable financial investment and an investment in our commute to work. Me over an hour, her sometimes two hours, which means that we now have to put our son in before and after care. And what I'm saying is not to launch upon anyone in this room and what sacrifices they make for their families. I'm sure most of you folks being long-time Carroll County residents, I'm new here, so I'm still learning. Thank you, thank you. So I'm here for the long haul. I'm just, I just, I appreciate what everyone is saying here and what I can tell you is that you will have me as an ally to try and help secure and keep intact the initial way of life that reminds me of what I grew up on, on a farm, what my wife grew up on when her and her family lived in Pennsylvania. You know, we made, we made a significant sacrifice to put our kid in a school system that we trust and that we thought was going to take care of his best interests. And, you know, I don't look like everybody else in the room, so this was a little bit of a big move for me, knowing that it was going to impact our son being biracial, me being biracial myself and knowing what I dealt with and being concerned about what he was going to deal with. And so far, my PTO, my school, my school's principal have been phenomenal. And I have returned that in kind whereby, over the holidays, you know, I baked about 20 pies so that the teachers could have that. I baked about 600 cookies, you know, my grandmother's recipes to, as a way of saying thank you to our building staff and teachers for taking care of my son. So I want to thank you for the information. I want to thank the board and the commissioners and everybody else who have been doing that work. And the mother of five, my hat's off to you, ma'am, for going down to Annapolis and, and doing that work while maintaining a house. So you have a huge investment here and I hope that this partnership can continue and that we can make it stronger so that Carroll County's voice is not only heard, but maybe we can be influential in some of the change that needs to happen to stem this and kind of get things back to an area where I think we were doing okay. And we can only just go up and not have to worry about being saddled with a financial burden that may hurt and cripple some families. I'm fortunate, but there are other people who are not. So thank you very much and I'm sorry it took so long.
We appreciate it and appreciate you being here. And I would, I would suggest that your experience you just described for yourself is repeated in many, if not all of our schools, all of the time in Carroll County by, by folks. And, and the concerns you shared about Blueprint implementation early on, we share those concerns and that's why I think everyone, so many in the room have worked so hard to get to this point of waiver, to say, let's take a pause, let's relook at this, send us your consultants, let's, let's look at it with them. Because, you know, Blueprint's tricky sometimes to talk about. There are parts of Blueprint that I think many of us would say, the theory is very solid and would be very interested in that. And, and that would serve our schools in many ways well. But the detail of implementation, you know, we need to really look at that. And I think one thing that Blueprint envisioned, I don't even think they envisioned it, I think if you read the Kerwin report, it's clear, was that there was too much central office in school systems in Maryland and that needed to be pushed down to the school level. And what we've been trying to make the case, and I think we've, Superintendent's done well, is to say that, that may be generally true, we don't know, but that's no longer true in Carroll because we cut a lot of positions from fiscal year nine to fiscal year 19. And so if there's another school system that has some teacher specialists or whatever, a bunch of, a bunch of positions that they can move down to the school level so that they don't have to move so much from school A to school B, then, then that's great. That's great that they can do that and that's Blueprint, that's Blueprint and that's compliant. But we ran out of that. And so we're doing two things. We're moving the classroom teachers, but we're also pulling the supporting resources from certain schools because that's where they are for us. They're at the school level already. And to the, one of the points you started with, and one of the things Superintendent's been saying to anyone she can talk to in or around Annapolis is, you know, is this what Blueprint envisioned? Because shifting class sizes in some schools is one thing, and, and there are other school systems that have larger class sizes and somehow they, they do that. But I'm also having to pull the supporting resources for kids and for other teachers at the same time. And I'm not so sure that's what Blueprint envisioned. And whether it's our school with the highest percentage of compensatory ed students or whether it's our school with the lowest percentage of compensatory ed students, they all have compensatory ed students. And they all have students who, whether they're compensatory ed, free and reduced meal students or not, they struggle to learn to read, they struggle to learn to compute math. And, and pulling those other resources out at the same time that we're shifting class sizes is not, in our opinion, going to lead to successful outcomes in all of our schools in the future. That's been the work just to get to this point. And we hope with the time, we can figure out better ways to go about this where maybe we don't have to pull all of those resources, especially at the school level.
I appreciate you saying that. You know, my, my son goes to the library regularly, the school's library. And I, when, when we first came to the school, we met the librarian, you know, so if at some point it comes to where you pull the librarian, the media specialist, well now, who do our kids go to? What, does the principal have to leave her office and her day-to-day functions to come down? Like who do we pull? And I really think that the people who sit in Annapolis, they do. Employee are hard. You know, my kid goes to the library and he comes home, every week he comes home with one or more books and they're all animal books. He can sit, he can name the name of dinosaurs that I can't pronounce. He's, he's eight, you know, he talks about, he talks about animals, he talks about sea creatures, he has a love of animals, you know? My wife had a dream that she wanted to be a vet. I think my son's going to end up going down that path. So the NFL might be out of the question, but that is what it is. You know, so it's, there is a negative impact and I think that's the elephant in the room, that the people who make the decisions, and I don't think their kids in their homes have to live with those consequences, but we do. I think that they need to be made clearly aware of that. And the fact that the superintendent, along with everybody else who's on the board and the commissioners, have made those hard cuts that our teachers and the specialists have had to soldier through, shows a measure of compassion and fiscal responsibility in making tough, uncomfortable decisions, but still maintaining a core foundation to our school system and the way of life around here that people seemingly have protected for generations if I'm not mistaken. So whatever you need done, I will be more than happy to be another hand in that, or to move that boat, you know, in a safer and, and more family-oriented fashion. Again, thank you very much.
I would, I would suggest each of you find that example, like the one he just shared about media specialists, find that example and send that example to those email addresses and ask that they support the waiver request so that we can, we can spend more time figuring this out.
You might want to stay up here because this question might pertain to you as well about, about the consultants. Since they're coming in to look at the, the Blueprint and allocations and everything, is there something, can you tap into them a little bit about our overall funding? I mean, we are 24th in the state. Is there any way to look at how we, I don't know how the numbers are presented and everything in order to get state funding? Is there anything they can do to massage that a little bit?
Well, there's nothing that they can do other than be good eyes and ears and, and report back to, to the AIB. I do think, like, there's a bigger, this is going to get, I'm, I'm not going to go too far because this will get way offline, but there's a bigger case to be made about whether all of the Blueprint funding streams are the correct amount. And there's one called the foundation, which is sort of just general funding. And one of our concerns is that that amount of money is not sufficient to run the school system and do some of these other things. So we'll make that case as we talk to them about what are other solutions. What this really gets down to is showing how you spend money. It's really about expenditure reporting. It's, ultimately you have to have the money to spend, so it's a budget discussion, but it's about showing that you're spending your money at the school level, but more so at the school level in the correct ways according to Blueprint. And so that's really the power I, I think we'll see in the APA consultants is to be able to look at our expenditures with us and say, this is what I'll be saying, what are we forgetting? What have we missed? What is some other county able to charge to compensatory ed or to ESOL that we haven't put into, into, into action here? Because anything like that reduces that overall dollar from 44 million to something less, to something less, to something less. And as that number would go down, then it's, it becomes incrementally, hopefully eventually, a little more reasonable about how much has to go from school A to school B or what other roles have to be reduced. So I think that's where they'll spend their time with us on how are we spending money?
Thank you.
I'd like to thank you because I've been in this fight when we were, before Blueprint ever started. So I remember when we lost our instructional assistance in kindergarten, I had one kid that had one and one that didn't, drastic changes. As a parent who's been in here, and I have a senior right now, which I can't believe, this school system has been absolutely amazing. I still do not understand how Kerwin for one second could think the Blueprint was going to be successful when it has failed in three other states. And I know everyone is saying, we're grateful for everything that we're getting right now and we are. Thank you to the commissioners that are here. Thank you to the Board of Ed members that fought to get us more funding. Thank you. My concern is the AIB, if we're just trying to push the stone forward, what happens when we can't push it forward anymore? What happens when we don't get the waiver for four or five years? We're back in this same situation with this same fight. And between the last town hall and now, the difference is everyone thinks we're in a good position, so I don't have to show up tonight. I can go to my kids' sport events or I can stay home because it kind of looks crappy, it's a little cold. The fight is not over and people need to understand that. They also need to understand, stop sending in the form letters. They need heartfelt letters, like a true impact letter, like what our police officer in front of me just said. They need honest things. The second you send in one of those Facebook blurbs that says, just send this in, it goes in a circular file. I'm just very concerned that we're being not complacent, but we're in a feeling of, oh, this is all good, when if we don't get the waiver, we are back here next year, probably fighting even harder because I had my TED Talk and I'm not really sure where the extra funding's going to come. But if we're, how prepared are we? How prepared are the commissioners to understand that this is all hope? It's not set in stone. And I'm a mom who has to live in reality, not in the, well, let's hope it all goes forward and works well, because I've seen what happens when it doesn't. I lived those 10 years with my kids in the school system. So I am very concerned for future kids going through this. What are the answers if we don't get this or the AIB says, hey, I, I think you can still make these changes? We can't afford the penalty if we don't make the changes.
Right. I mean, if we don't make the changes that are required for Blueprint fiscal compliance, then we lose part of our state funding, which we can't afford to do. And I agree with you, our community can't get compliant at this point. That's why I need your help to make sure that people reach out to the AIB between now and April 17th, to let them know that we desperately need this waiver and why we need this waiver. And we just have to take this one step at a time. You know, if on April 18th, we wake up and we don't have this waiver, you know, we've already been meeting about what that will mean for us and, and, you know, the plan that will have to go into place. So, you know, we have to take this one step at a time. We have to keep our community engaged. That's something I'm going to keep doing and that's something I need you to help with.
We need to keep showing up, not just show up to one town hall. We need to show up to everything that's coming out.
Yes, absolutely.
Commissioner meetings and try to send more things to the AIB. So that cannot stop.
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Celeste Jordan, President of Carroll County Education Association. I really don't have questions and I, it's weird it's faced this way because I talk to them all the time. I do want to bring up these, the process we have here, Carroll is actually being a leader in a good way for once, because I've been here since 1998. I taught in the high schools for 25 years. The best development and professional experience I've had has been the last two years with the collaboration. And the fact that people are willing to have conversations with people they don't normally agree with. And it's through those conversations, I say this a lot at the school board meetings, it's by having conversations and truly listening to each other that we're going to make some changes. And one thing that's kind of been lost in all of this, and I think it kind of came up when the police officer here was speaking about his son, at these meetings, we don't talk about students because we're trying to give you the big picture. When CCA and CCPS meet with our work groups that have been going on for two years, we talk about students and how this is going to work or not work and what we should do and ask, what we should ask for and what we should not ask for. But the true thing of Carroll County right now is that people are having conversations who don't normally have conversations. You know, it's, you know, there are some people I've talked to all the time, okay? I've, I've seen more John O'Neill than I care to. But you got to meet with the other people, you know, to have the commissioner call up and say, I want to talk to you. That's what we need to do to go down to Annapolis to speak with Justin Reedy and Josh Stanko. That's what has to be done. And this level of community involvement I've never seen since 98, except maybe around the school closures. And even then, that was only three communities that were standing up to fight for that. So now that we have things like the CEC, who's been going down and fighting for the county and the employees and the students, we need to keep that up. But it can't just be, I mean, I've heard parents say, and say it to me, and I know Cindy Porter has educated some people in the community as well, we didn't know this was coming. You can't say that because Dr. McCabe did put this out there. We've all put this out there. We can work together to make these things actually work for Carroll County. I will tell you that across the state, I hear what's going on in Carroll County that you guys are all getting along. And it's because we are working towards a common good here and we're putting aside some petty stuff to then just deal with what's real here, which is our students, okay? And the families and educators here. Because again, CCPS is the largest employer in the county. So, you know, that is something, okay? So I just wanted to bring up about the collaboration part, how much we've been doing with that. I'm sure there's some people who think it's fake as anything. It's, it's not. It is a little bit of a bizarre world for me, but... bit of a bizarre world for me. But it, it's a good bizarre world that we're getting, that we're able to work together on things in a way that we never have before. And the blueprint work groups that we've had over the last two years, that many people on that side of the room have been part of, it has been collaboration like never before. And that is going to be the best thing for our students in this county. So that was it. Thank you.
Yeah, I couldn't agree more. The collaboration that we've, that we've had with all of our employee groups, as well as our parents, our commissioners, our Board of Education members, our delegates, we've never come together like this before. It's been a great thing. And I, I think, I think that we will see a good outcome from it.
Hi, my name's Kelly and I have four students in the Carroll County Public School System, one at the high school level at Liberty, one at Oklahoma Road Middle School, and two at Carrolltown. My question for you is, can you talk a little bit more about the elimination of the seven athletic directors and how their job responsibilities will be fulfilled?
Sure. Yes, I know that's been a concern.
All right. So I've talked a lot about athletic directors. I want to be clear, we're not, we're not eliminating the positions. The positions are transitioning. Our athletic directors currently serve as administrators in our county. In the future, they're going to serve as teachers within, within our county. There will be a teaching role that will be associated with that. And I envision that they'll probably teach for half the day and have the other half of the day for planning and athletic director duties. In addition to, our teachers throughout our system that do extra duty roles and responsibilities have what we call a stipend or an extra duty stipend. That's part of the negotiated agreement with our bargaining unit. And they will receive a stipend for their work as well. We are shifting some of their current roles and responsibilities to others in our system. Some will go to our administrators. For example, our athletic directors currently manage our use of facilities. So the coordination of the facilities usage, both in the building and then external groups. And our, and as you all know, our facilities are utilized by our community all the time. So that responsibility will shift. And then some of the other responsibilities and things that they've been able to do in the past, like some of our field maintenance and our markings of the fields, those things, they will shift to some of our maintenance and operations staff. And we're still in the, in the process of figuring all this out. This is a model that has been used in CCPS before. We are one of two systems that currently use, have our athletic directors as administrators. But the vast majority of our systems across the state utilize a model where our athletic directors are teachers and then do additional duties as part of their, their teaching day, but also in the evening as well, too. It will be a shift and we'll work through that. We're committed to doing that as well.
Thank you.
All right. Well, I just want to thank everybody for coming out tonight. Again, we need your help. Get the word out to your friends, your relatives, your neighbors, to contact the AIB. Let them know we need this waiver and I will be sending something out as soon as I know whether we got it or not, so that we can plan going forward. The AIB contact information is in the back before you leave. Thank you again.